Meeting to order. It's a meeting of the Harwich Planning Board on Tuesday, January 8th at 6:42. A couple of things I'd like to remind the audience, of course, we're all very happy to have you here. As to recording and taping is required by law. The town will audio or video record this meeting. You can see that going on to your right. Any person intending to either audio or video record this proceeding is required to inform the Chair. Is anyone recording? Okay. Tonight, we have a pretty active agenda. And for those of you attending, I would ask that if you do have to speak, and we encourage you to speak up, please come to the podium, let us know who you are, sign in so we know who's been here. We have the minutes, we can reflect that in the minutes. And we really need and value your input, right? We're trying to make sure that you're heard. And with that, I would say we can start with the public hearings and then we have a public meeting. So the public hearing is PB 2018-38, Chase Street Properties, Inc. Owners, Kara William-Croll. Mr. Croll is here on behalf of approval of a special use permit with waivers pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Sections 325-14.Q and Article 5. Use regulations for detached residential accessory structure with two bedrooms. Property located at 20 Chase Street, MAP 4, parcel N2-2, in the RL zoning district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may have that planned?
Yes.
Actually, it's also up there too, Bill. That helps.
Thank you.
There you go. We're good.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Croll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Croll from Harwich Fort here this evening, representing Chase Street Properties, Inc. I have one of the principals of the corporation, Lori Clark, seated with me. The property in question is shown on the assessor's map and also on the map on the screen, the plan on the screen. It's located on Chase Street, 38 Chase Street, on the east side of Herring River. The petitioner is seeking a special permit from this board this evening for a detached residential accessory building with two bedrooms, as shown on the plans that were submitted with the petition. The certified pot plan by Ryder &amp; Wilcox is dated October 17, 2018, revised November 9, 2018. And it's also shown, the detached structure with the two bedrooms is also shown on the building and elevation plans dated October 19, 2018 by Carl C. Oldenberg, architect. Those were also filed with the petition. The detached structure, which as you know is required to be accessory to the principal structure on the lot. There is a primary, single-family residence on the lot. The plan is, by the petition, is to demolish that, replace it, and then construct the new detached accessory residential structure. They have been to the Conservation Commission, and the Conservation Commission in the staff report indicated that approval was granted, order conditions granted on December 5. The Board of Health noted that there's a seven-bedroom capacity to the proposed septic system. There'll be two bedrooms in the detached accessory structure, and there will be no more than five bedrooms in the new primary structure. The petitioner contends that the proposed structure meets the requirements of the bylaw. It's set back sufficiently from the boundary lines and otherwise meets the criteria for a detached accessory residential structure and that there would be no substantial increase in noise, fumes, odors, congestion, traffic, or the like. There would be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, and adequate and appropriate facilities are provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. And the petitioner contends that, as a result, there would be no substantial detriment to the neighborhood, and asks that the petition for the special permit be granted this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Along with what Attorney Croll just said, I don't have a whole lot to add. Police Department, from law enforcement and criminal justice perspective, has no issue with the request. The fire and engineering had no concerns. As mentioned, the Conservation Commission did approve this on, excuse me, December 5, 2018. The Health Department reviewed a plan prepared by Ryder &amp; Wilcox dated October 17, 2018, revised November 9, 2018, which shows a proposed two-bedroom septic system for the proposed two-bedroom accessory dwelling with a seven-bedroom septic system reserve area. The plan also shows that the main building is to be raised and replaced. Floor plans for the main dwelling are not included in the plan, but the new main dwelling must not exceed five bedrooms. In order for Board of Health to approve the two-bedroom accessory structure, disposal system construction permit must be approved for the proposed two-bedroom septic system, and floor plans must be provided for the new main dwelling to ensure that only seven bedrooms total between the two structures. This must be completed prior to Board of Health signing off on the building permit. That does not affect this board's action.
Sure.
But just a heads up to the applicant. I must note that the incorrect zoning district was noted in the legal notice. The correct district is RL. In your staff report, it did reflect RL, but it was advertised as RR. This is not a fatal flaw because the zoning requirements are the same for both districts. The waivers that are requested are reasonable and pretty standard for this type of request. And at this time, it appears that all other requirements have been met.
Okay. So before we begin asking for comments from the board, I'd like to explain to everybody in the audience that we have a member of the planning board calling in, which is why we have this system here. David Harris is lucky enough to be in Florida. It's pretty cold down there. But regardless, I wanted you to understand that if you hear somebody speaking up, it's Mr. Harris. So with that, are there any comments from the planning board?
I have none. I have none.
None for me.
Yep. David?
No, I guess it's more about the agenda than it is, I did not receive a staff report on the one item that is included in the packet, but not on the agenda, that the robing.
That was sent inadvertently, the wrong, that's not on the agenda, the plans that you received, is not on the agenda this evening.
That's for the next meeting.
I have them in the email you sent. I have no comment.
Okay, David. The packet that you did receive, I believe, is for the next meeting, correct?
Yeah. In the snail mail packet.
Yep.
What was sent via the electronic was correct, but the wrong hard copies got sent out.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Public hearing.
Oh, public hearing, sorry about that. Too fast. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this, as I said, please speak up. Let us know who you are, where you live, and make your comments. Don't be shy. If there aren't any comments, do we have a motion?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. All in, oh, I have to take a roll call because of, so, all in favor? Craig?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in favor and unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve a waiver of any and all commercial and residential requirements of the bylaws that are not applicable to the petition.
Second. Okay, again, roll call. Craig?
Aye.
Joe?
Yes.
David?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Helen?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So it's unanimous, Charlene, and let the minutes reflect that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I now make a motion on the following findings of fact. One, the property is located within the, it's not RL.
No, it is RL.
It is RL.
What, I thought we just corrected it.
From RR.
The advertisement said RR.
I see.
RL is correct.
Okay. The property is located within the RL zoning district. Two, the use is consistent with the zoning code and will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Three, the site is in appropriate location for such use. Four, the accessory structure will not contain a stove, and therefore, it is not a kitchen and is not an accessory apartment as defined in paragraph 325-2. Word usage and definitions, quote, dwelling, single-family, with accessory apartment, close quote. Five, the proposed parking area will provide sufficient off-street parking, which meets the minimum requirements of the town code, and as such, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard of the vehicles or pedestrians.
Second. All in favor by roll call? Craig?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Helen?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve with conditions the use special permit and waivers for Planning Board 2018-38, Chase Street Properties, Inc., as owners, for an accessory structure with bedrooms pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, 325-13, Table 1, 325-14-Q, and 325-51, for detached residential accessory structure with two bedrooms for property located at 20 Chase Street, MAP 4, parcel N2-2, in the RL zoning district. The approval is based on the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich with the above findings and the following conditions. One, the accessory structure is not an accessory apartment pursuant to 325-2, word usage and definitions, quote, dwelling, single-family, with accessory apartment, close quote, and shall not contain a kitchen. Two, all Board of Health and Conservative Commission requirements shall be met. Three, the special permit decision shall be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. And four, any changes to the plan shall be subject to further planning review, planning board review.
Do we have a second? Okay, by roll call. Craig?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
Aye. It carries, and it's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I think the most excitement you can have after the New Year in Harwich and dreary night.
Stick around, Bill. We've got a hot agenda next. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next, what we have is on the public meeting side of this, and we certainly appreciate everybody attending, we've got a number of items under zoning amendment discussion and possible votes. Four items there, freestanding portable signs, building height, floodplain, accessory dwelling unit bylaw, and a retaining wall for septic systems. Next, under new business, we have the representative to the Community Preservation Committee, a vote to appoint. We review our meeting minutes, review the annual report, and then the next three major items are advisory opinions, old business briefings, and reports, and then, of course, we'll adjourn. So let's begin with freestanding portable signs.
Do you want me to dive in on this one?
Please.
Okay.
Thank you.
So over the summer, there were concerns raised by a number of different individuals and entities within the town regarding the abundance of A-frame signs. There are really no regulations within the zoning bylaw except the definition. So the Board of Selectmen did ask that the planning board review this, and at this point, here is what the board has come up with so far. I'll go through it. I'll just read the whole thing. The existing definition of A-frame easel or sandwich board sign would be deleted, and a new definition entitled freestanding portable signs would be added. And the definition is a single or double-faced, self-supporting sign made of wood, cardboard, plastic, metal, or other lightweight and rigid materials. Additionally, a new section, 25-26K, as in Katie, would be added to read as follows, and that H is incorrect, and that does need to be corrected. That should be an H, or, excuse me, a K. And the title needs to change, so there's another thing we need to correct. That should say freestanding portable signs. The requirements are, a sign permit from the Building Department shall be required. Item number two, the area of the sign shall be no more than six square feet per side. Number three, the sign height shall, the sign height above the ground shall not exceed three feet. Four, the sign width shall not exceed three feet. Five, the sign shall be unlit, shall be inaudible, and shall have no moving parts. Six, the sign shall be stable and have no external supports. Seven, the sign area, one side only, shall count towards the total allowable signage area in square feet for business pursuant to Section 325-27. Eight, the sign shall indicate no more than the name of the business, a special event, hours of operation, sale of a product or service, and price. Number nine, only one freestanding portable sign per business may be located on a property. A business with street frontage on two streets may have no more than one such sign on each street front. However, if there are multiple businesses on a property, there shall be no more than one such sign per business regardless of the street frontage. Item 10, the sign may only be displayed up to two hours before the business is open to the general public and during the time business is open to the general public. And item 11, the sign shall also comply with the requirements of Section 325-26-D through G. So basically, right now, we have a definition of the A-frame, which would be changing to freestanding portable sign. But there's no other requirements or anything within the zoning bylaw. There's no stipulation as to size, as to the number. The only language that exists is that all signage defined shall comply with the total square footage of signage that's allowable per business. And essentially, it's 78, or, excuse me, 48 square feet of signage per business per frontage is allowable. So if you are on Main Street and you also have frontage on Bank Street, if you have an entrance on each of those two frontages, you're allowed 48 square feet per entrance.
Yes.
So, and where the A-frame sign sits, if it's on Main Street, then the size of that A-frame sign would count towards your total signage. That's already in the bylaw, but other regulations were not. And this past summer, we had several businesses that had many, many signs, many A-frame-type signs. They were on the sidewalk. They're not supposed to obstruct pedestrian access. They cannot be on public property. Private property they can be on. We did, after a conversation at the last meeting, did come to realize that they can be on a private sidewalk, but they cannot obstruct any
Access and egress.
Physical access or egress, either along the sidewalk or in and out of a store. So that's kind of a basic overview of how we got to this point. I do have a couple corrections I need to make on this version, but essentially, that is what the board felt comfortable with at the last meeting. We had many discussions with Cindy Williams, the Chamber Executive Director. So she reached out. We do have a number of people here. It's actually great seeing people here. We don't get a lot of people at the planning board meetings, so, hi, everybody. You know, to try and get input from the business owners and the public before it goes to the next step, which would be if the board is ready to go, vote to send it to the Board of Selectmen. As soon as it's advertised in the paper, it's locked in. So it's better to have a conversation before that happens, make any tweaks or changes that might be necessary or deemed appropriate before we go that next step.
Okay. Thank you very much, Charlene. And with that, what I would like to do is ask any members of the planning board if they have any comments or if there are any items they'd like to clarify. Craig, anything?
This is Dave. I do have a comment.
Okay.
On item five, it says the sign shall have no moving parts.
We can't hear you, Dave.
I said, on item five, is that better?
Yep.
Yes.
On item five, it says, and shall have no moving parts. If this is a folding sign, we might want to note that no moving parts other than the folding Especially if you're asking somebody to have a double-faced sign that by its very design would probably be sold into a glass device when it's not in use, which makes it a moving And that's my fault, I should have caught that much earlier.
I was gonna say, you wrote this.
So.
Sorry, me.
No, no, no.
No.
Mr. Chair, a suggestion.
Please.
Perhaps we can add a sentence that says, the sign, while on display, shall be stationary.
Stationary is probably a given. We haven't, you know, have no moving parts other than the sign folding mechanism. There may be a better way to characterize than that. That's not getting to my mind. We ought to address this now in case somebody else comes up with, wait a minute.
I mean, I would, me, when I thought about moving parts, I wasn't thinking so much of the mechanism as I was if there was a whirly gig on it or a
Right, I agree.
Or a flag attached.
No motion to the sign, no movement to the sign while on display.
Thanks, David. That's a, it's a good point. Are you finished, or do you have other comments to offer?
No, that's, it's only, the only wrench I could think of to throw into the machinery.
Well, that's good. Great.
Just a comment, and it probably goes without saying, but one of the things that we spoke about at our last meeting was to make sure that everyone understands what we are attempting to accomplish here, and I think Charlene laid it out, but I just want to repeat it because I think it's important. Two factors. One is, we want to work with all of the business people to allow you to do all the things that we're laying out here in terms of advertisement and marketing and so forth, so that your businesses can thrive, and that will pull more businesses into the Town of Harwich. But also, we need to balance it by the safety of those visitors and residents and so forth. So that's kind of our motivation for what we're trying to accomplish here, and make sure that it's fair and understood by everybody so that everybody can comply.
Thanks, Craig. That really says a lot about what we're trying to do as a planning board. Joe, any comments?
Well, I just, item number one says, a sign permit from the Building Department shall be required. You think that's sufficient to say that the Building Department essentially is responsible for enforcing this code? I think it may be, and I, you know, I don't want to add any more words if we don't need any more words, but as I read through this whole thing, thought occurred to me that
Charlene?
Because this is part of the zoning bylaw, the Building Commissioner and officials are already the zoning enforcement officers and are required to
To enforce.
Deal with and enforce the sign code.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, one question through you to Charlene. I know we had talked about enforcement by noncriminal
It's already
It's already in there. Do we need a reference in this section back to it?
No, because
Or it's already covered?
It's already covered within the existing language
Okay.
Of the entire sign code.
I thought we had talked about that before. I just wanted to clarify before.
The Town Council, Adam Costa, had indicated that it was redundant.
Okay, perfect.
Go ahead, Char.
A couple things, conversations that I've been party to, or things that have been brought to my attention by Cindy, one, and some other folks, were a few things that people were concerned about. You know, will this affect real estate signs? No, it will not. Real estate signs fall under a different section of the sign code. Some items that are exempt from the sign code are business hours, cautionary signs, home occupation signs, municipal signs, municipal signs that are temporary, political signs, real estate signs, residential quarter board signs, special event flyers, umbrella signs, vending machines, there's only one per premises unless otherwise allowed by a special permit, water department signage, town meeting, election signage, open house and tag sale signs if displayed for not more than 48 hours, and also temporary signs, which there is a separate definition for temporary signs. So for particular types of uses or types of signs, such as, and I'll use real estate sign, there is a particular definition for real estate sign, and that falls under a different section of the sign code. Even though it's exempt, there are still particular dimensional requirements and things that it still needs to meet, but you don't need a sign permit for it, for a real estate sign. So just to mention that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Charlene. Any other comments from the planning board? David, you all set?
Yes, sir.
So if anyone from the audience would like to comment, sir?
Good evening, and thank you to the board for the opportunity. My name is Taylor Mills. I live at 139 Gorham Road, and I am a member of the Harwich Accessibility Rights Committee. And I'm here representing the committee tonight. W. Matthew Hart, as I'm sure you're aware, is the chairman. Gary Miller, also of Gorham Road, is the vice chair. I would like to submit a letter to you from Mr. Hart, if I may approach.
Sure.
By the way, Matt's the former chairman of this board.
I understand, sir.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. And really, my reason for being here this evening
You need to speak into the microphone, otherwise nobody can hear you.
My real reason for being here this evening is just the obligation that we have as the committee to ask the board and the Building Commissioner to do their due diligence in realizing that any barrier to the public way, public sidewalk, even private sidewalks where the public has a right of access, any barrier that limits the travel way to less than five feet.
Access and egress, correct?
Correct. Is a violation of federal law, and that's the Americans with Disabilities Act. And while it's potentially toothy, the issue that we see is that the Building Commissioner needs to take seriously the enforcement of these signs. We're not looking to restrict any of the businesses' opportunities to attract the public, but we do have a very serious obligation to make sure these ways are navigable for our members of the public with disabilities, particularly visually impaired.
Yes.
We've already had an incident. We pray there's not another, because these are foreseeable risks when they're placed in the public travel way. We invite thousands of people to our community every year. I'm certain there's a fair number of them who are visually impaired.
Yes.
It's incumbent upon us to do that due diligence, to make sure that we're not having the sidewalks be encumbered with signs.
Yes.
What comes to mind is one particular jeweler who is no longer in town, who had much creativity involved in his signage and the who had much creativity involved in his signage and the display. We didn't have an incident there that I'm aware of, but by the grace of God.
Yeah.
So that, that really is my, my purpose here.
Yep.
And again, I thank you for the opportunity to address you.
So, Mr. Hart, if, if I may?
He's not Mr. Hart.
Oh, you, you sent this in on behalf of Mr. Hart?
No, no, that's, that's Mr. Hart's words. That's...
Those are Mr. Hart's words.
Right. He was unable to be here tonight, along with vice chair Gary Miller.
Okay.
So I'm the messenger.
Your name, please.
Taylor Mills.
Taylor Mills.
Can you just write it down, just so we get it proper? We should read, this should get read into the record.
I'm, I'm happy to do that. Okay, this is dated January 8th, 2019, W. Matthew Hart. And, and he is the chairman of what, what group again?
The Hark, the Harwich Accessibility Rights Committee.
Harwich. Accessibility Rights. Committee. Okay, very good.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
I think it's important to refer them to this section, parts D through G, which addresses many of the issues related to where the signs can be or cannot be located. Much of that is related to making sure that, that there's space for pedestrians, including those with disabilities where accessibility under ADA is, is required.
Okay, what I propose, David, is I'll complete reading this into the minutes. And if you have that out in front of you or if one of our...
I've got it.
Okay, we'll, we'll do that. I think that's a very good idea. So I'll continue. So the, anyway, so this is from the Harwich Accessory Rights Committee.
Accessibility Rights Committee.
Accessibility Rights Committee. New Samoset Road, Harwich.
Jim.
Ma'am.
You need to, sorry, be close to that.
The number of square feet of the sign for each business is specifically detailed in Harwich bylaws. Having an additional sign, permanent or portable, violates the total square feet that the individual sign permit allows. The definition for an A-frame slash ESOL slash sandwich signs in Harwich is in section 325-25, and is usually a double-faced, freestanding portable sign. The key word in the definition is portable. But that definition does not completely define where, when, or how long the sign can be used. There is no listing for a portable sidewalk sign in the Harwich sign code. Besides, the federal law about ADA accessibility supersedes any Harwich bylaw, and a portable sign on a public sidewalk is defined as a barrier, and a barrier on a public, on a public access is not allowed in the United States. Unless there are five feet of unobstructed passageway, a sign or advertising optical that in the way of public access is a barrier and is against the Americans with Disabilities Act. I believe that will mean it is a violation of the Harwich sign code too. Okay?
Hence, my hope that enforcement will be done diligently in this process, notwithstanding anybody's, anybody else's rights to display their wares and products on the streets. We just are concerned about the accessibility for...
Yes.
Visually impaired members.
Mr. Mills, my mother had macular degeneration.
As did mine, sir.
I understand, and thank you so much for your comments.
Well, thank you. Appreciate again the opportunity.
No worries. Thank you, Charlene.
And if I might, this, this board, actually, every time it's talked about this particular bylaw has said that, you know, we need to comply with, with ADA requirements, and it can't impede anyone who has any type of disability. So whether it's a wheelchair, I mean, my husband's just a grumpy old man, and if there's an A-frame sign in his way, he throws it off to the side, so, you know.
Well, I'm, I'm getting to be an old man. I'm not quite that grumpy.
Did you get that in the minutes?
But in, in light of what David Harris said, and I will read this. The last item in, in item 11 says, "The sign shall also comply with the requirements of 325-26, D through G," which also states, D is, "Sign placement shall not create a hazard or interfere with snow removal," excuse me, "or vision or movement of motorists, pedestrians, or bicyclists." E, "All signs shall be reasonably placed so as not to obscure other signs." F, "No sign shall be located in a public right-of-way, nor shall they be located so as to block a private, public or private sidewalk, stairway, driveway, or parking lot, or impair sight distance for motorists or pedestrians." And G is, "No sign shall be affixed to or posted in front of any guardrail located in a public right-of-way." So that one really doesn't. But, you know, they, they cannot impede a public right-of-way at all.
Okay.
And if, and if I might, this last summer, you know, kudos to the building department because they really stepped up and went out there many a evening, even though, you know, we only work 8:30 to 4:00, but our local inspector was out there many evening.
Yep.
You know, taking down signs, speaking with business owners, letting them know, hey, this is not allowable. And, you know, basically would let them know, and then if they didn't do it, he would take them down.
So, Charlene, what is the total amount of square feet that each business is allowed?
You're allowed up to 48 square feet in general. There are other little caveats here and there, but the, the basic is you're allowed 48 square feet of signage.
And then this freestanding, right?
Yep.
Is a part of...
It can be a part of. It had, it would be counted towards that 48 square foot total. So we do have some, some businesses in town that actually have some very modest signs. You know, I review every sign permit that comes through before it goes to the building department. And it's actually rare that we see a sign of 48 square feet. We're seeing things much smaller than that quite often, anywhere from 12 to 16 square feet. So it's the total cumulative signage that counts towards that 48 square feet. And sometimes bigger isn't always better for signage.
Any other comments? Anyone? Ma'am, you have a question?
This is Dave again, and I...
David, we're, we're going to, excuse me, please. We're going to have a, a person from the audience speak, please? Just a moment, and then we'll come back to you.
Okay.
Okay, ma'am.
Thank you. Whoops.
There you go.
My name is Pam Roswell, and before I begin, I'm going to be very brief. But I do want to thank you all for your efforts at trying to help those of us who can't see navigate the sidewalks of Harwich Port. I have to say that I've lived here my whole life, and I think that Harwich Port has never been prettier or more vibrant than it was this summer. It, it really was exciting. It was fun to see. But having said that, it was hard to navigate. I walk, I walk that sidewalk several times every single day. And there are spots in Harwich Port where the only way I can continue down the sidewalk is to walk into the road. There's one, I'm not going to name people or specific areas, but I think you can figure it out. There is one instance where a business is on Route 28, and then you go down a side street. And there is remnants of an old sidewalk there. The sidewalk is now totally taken up by tables and chairs and large planters. They're very attractive. I don't have any problem with that at all. But that's the street that I used to get to the beach, and I cannot go down there unless I walk in the road.
Yeah.
It's not fair to me, and it's not fair to a driver, because if I'm in the road, I have no peripheral.
Yeah, yeah.
And somebody's coming out of the corner. Somebody's going to hit me, and they're going to be at fault, and that's not fair to them, because I'm, I'm going to be where I shouldn't be, but I have no choice. So I thank you very much for your efforts.
Ms. Roswell, we, we really appreciate your feedback. And anytime somebody comes and speaks like you and the gentleman before you, we learn. And it helps us do a better job as, as your, as your planning board. And that's the purpose, really, of this type of hearing.
Well, thank you, and I, I do appreciate that. That's why I'm here, so. And I, again, I want to give kudos because I think that the business owners, the Harwich Garden Club, and the Chamber of Commerce knocked themselves out this summer to make the town welcoming and very attractive. So it was fun. It was great.
I have to concur too. I mean, I think, I think what we're trying to do is find a balance here between facilitating the needs of our business people and the folks in, in our community. And I think we've taken some nice steps forward. Thank you so much.
You have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ma'am?
How about the lady in the background who's coming up?
Okay, that's fine. Yep, okay.
Okay, thank you. I'm Carla Burke, and I live at 200 Bank Street here in Harwich Port. And I just want to say first, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I have a comment and I have a question. Number one, under the, in the draft that says the sign permit will be required and given out by the planning department. My comment is, I think this is a great opportunity. At the time that a business or somebody applies for one of those permits, for the building department to provide the information under chapter 325-26, D through whatever, particularly F, section F. It's a great way for educating those businesses that they cannot have signs in the public way where they can be located. And I think that, that opportunity, along with the chamber, hopefully providing that same type of education would be wonderful. My question is, could somebody explain what is the procedure for the enforcement of the, of these bylaws, particularly the ones that we're concerned about in terms of public way? Who, what is the procedure? Who enforces that? And is there, is it a complaint needed if, you know, if somebody, if I was to walk along and finds, you know, one of these signs? Do I have to file a formal complaint? Just, just so the public knows what the enforcement, and is there a warning, fine, what is the citation?
We'll have our town planner, Charlene Greenall, respond.
We do have members of the building department here, but I'll, I'll, I'll respond to this, and if I'm wrong, I'm sure they'll correct me.
Yep.
But the permit is actually issued through the building department, and I, as town planner, review all the, the signed permits that go through. Long ago and far away, we tried to get signage as part of the site plan review, but oftentimes you didn't know what, what use was going into a, a structure or a development when it came before this board. So tried to figure out other ways to do it. That being said, enforcement is 100% through the building department. If, definitely if you believe that a sign is in error or in, you know, not complying with the bylaw, definitely touch base with the building department. The building department consists of the building commissioner and a local inspector. There's only two of them, so they can't be policing 24/7. You know, all these different sites, along with doing all the building permit stuff that they're required to do by law. So if there is a sign that is, you know, on a sidewalk that shouldn't be there, absolutely get on, on the phone and, and call the building department. If it's not during regular business hours, you know, your, your best bet would be to notify the police department, especially if it's blocking a sidewalk or a, or a crosswalk or any kind of public way. I know there's been conversations with the police department in those instances, and I know that they have done some removal, removal of signage. You know, the, the building department is doing the best that it can, I think, you know, especially this last summer. I think they really did a great job in the enforcement aspects. But, you know, they can't police it 24/7. There's just not enough, you know, people. So, you know, they do the best they can, but if you do know of something, if you see something, definitely let, let the building department know.
And, and what is the, if a business is in violation, what, what is the procedure that's taken? In other words, if the building inspector does go?
Generally, it's a verbal warning to begin with.
Okay.
They're told that, you know, this is not a legal sign. You don't have a sign permit. It's in the wrong place. You know, they take it down. They can physically remove the sign if, if they feel that it's necessary. In this past summer, they did do that. They removed quite a few signs. There is a fee to get your sign back. But there is also a fine associated if there's a cumulative violation. They didn't, I don't think they went that strength this last summer. I think they wanted to try and work with people. However, this next summer, if there are still violations, they may step it up and start fining. And I believe the fine is $100 for every offense.
And is that located somewhere in the, in the zoning code?
It is in the zoning. It's referenced in the zoning bylaw, and it's actually in the, I think it's in the code of the town of Harwich or the general bylaws. I will def, I'll find that and get that information out.
Okay. That was one thing I couldn't find, so.
And, and Ms., Ms...
It's not in a great spot.
And I, you know, Ms. Burke, what, what I would say is, there's no sense in having these rules if they're not enforced, right? So, and, and as stated earlier by Ms. Slawski, this is not something that's a criminal ticket, but you, you can be ticketed. And I would compare that to progressive disciplinary action, if you will, right? So it's not, it's not to beat anybody up, but it's to let them know that there's a code, and it's there to protect everybody.
I found it. I did. I did.
Mr. Chairman, this is Dave. I have a comment. When you're ready.
Please, David, go ahead.
Or, okay.
Just, let's hear. Please stay, Ms. Burke.
A sign permit from the building department shall be required. If the building department could help the applicant, the business, comply with 26D through G, which, which tells where the, where the sign can and cannot be, but it's very, it's somewhat difficult to interpret that. So if, if the applicant could work with the building department to determine where their sign should be, that would solve a lot of these problems with the sign being in the wrong place.
Yeah.
If I might, when, when an application is made for a sign, they are required to show a site plan and where it's going to be located. The problem now is, I don't know if any of the A-frame signs actually have building per, or sign permits. So they've never come in to say, "This is where we'd like to locate them." So, you know, that is required now. It's not being done. This will reinforce that. You need to get a, a sign permit for this. Identify the violation and penalty clause. It's in the zoning bylaw. It's section 325-48. It's violation and penalties, and it's actually $150.
Okay.
The other, the other point that might be useful is the Access Board, the federal agency that writes the guidelines that are actually regulations
Yep.
for the, for the Americans with Disabilities Act. They put out a guideline, which most people don't have, don't even know exists. So if we can get those and have them available with the building department, that will help the building department and the owners comply with the ADA, which is very difficult because the ADA was designed to enforce through the court through the building department.
Yep.
And if I might?
Yes.
The building department cannot enforce the American with Disabilities Act. It can just let people know it exists and that...
That's what I was suggesting.
Yeah. And right now, I mean, whether it's the building department, the town planner, the planning assistant, or, or any of the executive assistants in, in, you know, when you come up to community development, we all are available to work with people, and, and we do try. It doesn't mean that people always listen to us. So, you know, we do, do our best to, to try and guide people down the, the proper path, but...
And, and I think, you know, probably as a last resort, if, if we would have to get, get a higher authority when it comes to enforcement of the law, then we could do that as well.
Well, because it's a zoning bylaw... Well, because it's a zoning bylaw, it automatically falls under the building department. In other communities, Dennis, for example, it's actually a general bylaw, so it falls under the police department and the building commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you very much for giving us that feedback. Sure.
Hello, I'm Tiffany Nicely-Holoff, pastor, one of the pastors at St. Peter's Lutheran Church in East Harwich, Route 137, number 310. And in reading this today, as it came across email, it also applies, the way that it's written, to our swing sign. We are known around town as the church with the sign.
Yes.
And they don't mean the nice fancy permitted sign that we recently put up, they mean the swing sign that has the inspirational quotes. We are a church, not a business, and we are not in Harwich Port, but it does all apply the way this is written, so I'm asking for clarification. Our sign, we deliberately got one wider than three feet, number four on here, because we are on a very busy 45 mile an hour, 50 mile an hour, because people are driving down 137, and so a three-foot wide sign cannot be seen at those speeds.
I can answer this very quickly, you're exempt.
Why?
Because you're religious use.
Okay.
Church or other religious uses, any structure or use entitled to a religious exemption set forth and mastered and allowed, chapter 48, section three, you're signing, you're exempt from zoning.
Okay, thank you, so we can still put, according to number eight, inspirational quotes?
Yes, you can, and.
Please continue.
I can tell you, we'd be, we'd be very disappointed.
However, yeah, you are exempt, however, if for some reason it was blocking, you know, the access or blocking something, you know, you may be asked to move it to a more, you know, a better location. But I know where your signs are, I, I drive by them, and oftentimes they make me chuckle and smile.
So, Charlene, if I may.
Yeah.
I walk by your sign every day, right? I live in Cannon Hill. It's a great sign. It's inside the fence, not blocking any access or egress for the sidewalk, and it doesn't block anything in the parking lot. It's a good job, thank you.
Thank you, well, and our church members will let us know when they can't see, which is why it goes up and back and the, you know, beach grass gets moved, so thank you, I appreciate that.
Thanks. Anyone else? It's been great so far. Joe?
I believe the building inspector's here, could you step up to the?
Please introduce. Introduce yourself, sir.
Yes, hi, my name's Ray Chesley, I'm the building commissioner, and I'm here with Ken Murphy, he's the, the building inspector here, that generally gets the, gets the charge to remove the signs and talk to the owners, but we both do it.
And, and there's just, you are the building department, you and this gentleman?
Yes, we are the building department. And we have, as Charlene said, we have made some progress this past year. We tried to meet with the business owners, we did meet with the business owners early on the year, and the police department, and the fire department, and this past year was more of a, we, we looked at it more of an education type experience for this year. We didn't really want to fine anybody or hurt anybody or hurt anybody's business, we just wanted to educate them as to what needed to be done.
Right.
We will be ratcheting that up in 2019, this year. But that's how we approached it last year. And generally, we like to, we like to warn people first and try to get cooperation voluntarily before we get into any kind of fining or disciplinary actions on the thing, but we are prepared to do that.
I, I just have, I live in Harwich Port, so I'm familiar with the various A-frames up and down the main street in Harwich Port. Where else in town are there A-frames?
Are there A-frames?
Yes.
They get put out in various locations in town, but the, the hot spot is Harwich Port, really, and so that's where we started, and that's where we focused our energies on. But we'll eventually get townwide on it, there are other areas, but they don't, don't really represent the problem, the congestion, and really, the building department is most interested in safety.
Yes.
And so that's, that's our focus, but we also are charged with enforcing the zoning bylaw.
Thank you very much.
Actually, if I might, I'm glad Ray mentioned this, but early in the spring, there is a meeting for the license holders, that, I'm stealing Cindy's slender, that the, the police chief has gentlemen from the licensing, Mass. State Licensing folks come down. We were invited this last year to talk about, you know, liquor licenses and, and also signage and a bunch of other things, and I think it was a, a very good meeting, and people were put on notice at that point that, you know, we're going to be looking at things this, this last summer, but we're going to be stepping it up in the future.
Yeah.
And just A-frame signage, the question was asked, the Stop &amp; Shop Plaza area has A-frame signs, some of those are not in the best of locations. Along Route 28, you can go by, you know, A&amp;W, I've seen them at Villa Roma, you know, a lot of the restaurants have them up, and I think a lot of those may not be in violation, but they probably don't have a permit, so, you know, they need to come into compliance.
You know, there's a point that I'd like made a part of the minutes too, it, it doesn't matter whether you're in Harwich Port, East Harwich, West Harwich, it's Harwich, right? It's our town, it's our community, and the laws and the rules apply to everybody, right? So, thank you very much.
That's the way we look.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay.
And you are?
Yes, Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. Thank you, I want to thank the planning board, but also the members who did come out tonight, and as Jim just mentioned, this went to all of the members of Harwich Chamber, because the Harwich Chamber represents all seven villages. Yes, the big focal point has been Harwich Port, but Harwich Port has also grown by leaps and bounds and is thriving, as we all noticed this summer. One of the points that we really need to remember here is, yes, we all, including the businesses in town, everyone is worried about the safety, and when we all met a couple weeks ago, that was the big thing that we all wanted to talk about. I have reached out to a number of the members that could not be here tonight, and the common thing is, we want everyone, and they want everyone, to be playing in the same sandbox, the same, having all the same things, and they are willing and will abide by the policy that we put forward for everyone. Another thing too, we had talked about a few weeks ago, was the positioning of where these A-frames can go. Each of the businesses, especially in Harwich Port, there are some sidewalks that are a little wider, they're a little more narrow too. The, these can be put out, it's just we need to help educate everyone. One of the ladies that spoke tonight too, I think it was Mrs. Burke, what I think the chamber would like to do is maybe have some of these policies on hand, like we do with the wastewater and all the other things that are going on throughout town, for any of our members, certainly we can do a mailing prior to our spring meeting that we will do once again with the restaurants that hold liquor licenses, with the police and building, et cetera. But this way, during this slow time, we can kind of educate everybody so that everyone gets on the same page. We all want the same thing, we want our town to continue to grow, so I know there's a couple of the businesses that do want to speak, so I'm going to step away for now.
Sure, thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
Hi, I'm Luther Bates.
Hi, Luther.
Going to owner of Nines Art Gallery in Harwich Port.
Yep.
Lauren here, and some other businesses that I recognize the owners here. Thanks for the time to let us speak. I appreciate the opportunity to have an education here tonight, and I'm wondering if you could help clarify some, I'm wondering if these types of signs are allowed in Harwich Port at all, or not, based on what we have here in front of us. We have a lot of situations where, due to the expansion of the road, the sidewalks have become narrower over time, and they're right up against the buildings, and it, I guess it seems to me as though we're saying that we're not going to allow sandwich signs on those sidewalks, or am I missing something here?
Cindy?
As was stated earlier, that a sandwich board, freestanding sign can be there, and as long as you have a signed permit and it is included in that 48 square feet, they will be allowed.
On private.
On private property.
Well, that's, that's just the thing, is that we're not going to count the sidewalks as private property, and, and we all can agree that in Harwich Port, the buildings come right up to the edge of the sidewalk, and then the sidewalk begins, and then the road begins.
Mary, please.
So, through you, Mr. Chair. Not necessarily, just because it's paved, it may not be part of the right of way, unfortunately, this board isn't the one that's going to be able to tell you that, you're going to need to look at a plot pa, plot plan for the building and see what is owned by the building and where the property line ends. So, it, for some of you, it may be a little more complicated, but just because it's paved doesn't necessarily mean it's part of the right of way. At the same time, where there are sidewalks and there is grass, some of the grassy areas could be part of a public way, it all, it could be part of the way, it all depends on where the boundaries are, and unfortunately, that's not something that we can determine for you, it's going to be looking at your, at the property boundary lines.
Joe?
And I, to add to that, as I read this, I don't think you'll be able to continue to display your paintings as you do now in front of the, the business.
If I might, a painting is not a sign.
I know that.
But we do have bylaws regard, regarding outdoor display of goods, so that may be a different conversation to have with you.
Oh, we're assuming that those are exempt because they're a display of merchandise.
Outdoor display of merchandise is actually prohibited under certain circumstances, so we would need to look at, and it's all individual, everything, every single property is going to be very different based on where lot lines are and those kind of things. That's something that I'm more than happy to go over with you at another time regarding your artwork.
Sure, thank you.
Because that's not a sign. It's a display of goods.
We're here talking, but just, I heard this, I heard talk about the word balance, and we heard from some important concerns from some of the members who require a little bit more, let's say.
Assistance.
I was going to say certainty with, with their navigation, and I would just like to see some, also some balance, and, and we have to remember that we are a commercial district, and much like a, a commercial fish pier, where there's ways that the public has access to, they're not necessarily allowed down onto the dock. And the balance that I'd like to see is some sort of concession that maybe Harwich Port is an area in town that might be afforded some other exemptions, maybe in other portions of the sign code, such as the, the limit of, the distance of the sign could be off the side of the building, or maybe another area. If we're going to, you know, de facto restrict the, the sandwich signs, maybe we could loosen up some regulations in some of the other areas.
So, so Mr. Bates, if, if I may, what's, what's your real concern here?
So, our, the way our, our situation lays out is just, as we're driving down the road, there's a natural dead zone where we are, and we, we had a, a sandwich sign out there before we were educated, and it increased our awareness to drivers by an extremely large percentage.
Yep.
And we felt that the, the placement of that sign was not in an area of safety concern because it was near a tree, a planter, and a, a bike rack, and a transportation sign that said, "No parking," and it, it seemed to be an area where the, it was known that there were other obstacles, let's say, but it was in the visibility zone. The sign code that we are trying to adhere to doesn't allow us to get our message out towards the road, so the sandwich sign was an effective way for us to do that, and restricting that to the current regulations is.
So how, how big is the sign on your building?
On the face of the building?
Yeah.
Two foot by six foot, 12 square feet. But the trouble is, it's being blocked by trees, and the trees belong to the state, and it's a difficult area, so we're, we're looking just for that balance, and, and we're hoping for, to, just, I guess we're just trying to speak up a little bit to say, like, we're a commercial district, and we'd like to put some signs up to generate some more business, and how can we do that?
If I might, you are not allowed to put a private sign on either town or government property, so, you know, we can't give you a building permit or a sign permit to put a sign on a state road.
I understand.
Or on a town road, we, we just, we can't do that. That being said, there may be some creative ways, and certainly, you know, I'm, I'm happy to go down to anybody's property and, and try and figure out the best way to, to help figure out how signage can take place. The state can allow signage on state property, but you need a permit from them. I don't even know what you go through to do that, I don't even know how you do, I just, I have no idea, but I know that they're also not going to allow for a sign to be in an area that's going to obstruct visual pedestrian, you know, what have you, traffic, but there may be some creative ways. I, it just so happened, Cindy and I were actually looking at a plan of your block, George's Pizza, your building, and I forget what's next door.
Octogromity.
Yeah.
Just today, because we were trying to find something else out, and we did find a, a plan, dates back to 1966, but the, but the, the lot line hasn't changed. The road may have changed width or whatever, but the lot line has not changed. There is more area there than you think that is actually part of your frontage on your building, so that's why I said each individual property really needs to look, be looked at separately. I'm happy to work with people, you know, Cindy and I just absolutely hate each other, no kidding, Cindy and I get along so well, you know, we finish each other's sentences, and, and we're more than happy to work as a tag team to help people.
And that was just to go on record, that was something that, two weeks ago when we were all together, Charlene and I agreed that because we do have so many interesting and different and unique locations, that we are going to set up a time, and we can do it either here or at my office with businesses, so as we're going in and we're getting ready for the next season, we want everybody successful, continuing that, as you all agreed with me a couple of weeks ago. So, someone like the Nines, who, you know, we have so many new businesses coming in for this year too, these guys, oh my God, if you have not gone in there, you're missing out. It is an incredible addition to the town, so we're going to, Charlene and I will, as she said, tag team everything and get it so that everyone knows where they can put it, because there are some creative spots that we did find today that really may is going to make a lot of businesses that thought that, you know, when Ken and Ray come out, that they're not going to be able to, and I did have a conversation earlier with Ken, we're going to get to do some of this stuff after all, so. There, where is he? There's a bright light at the end of the tunnel, I promise.
And if I could put a little plug in, where they're located was my husband's uncle's bicycle shop many, many years ago, so when I had the opportunity to go in there, I was amazed, so I just wanted to.
Asking for the plot plan.
It's beautiful.
I have one more, Mr. Bates, stay, stay, don't, don't leave. Mary, please.
I have only one question through you, Mr. Chair to Charlene, there is, is there any prohibition for the overhanging signs, like some of the businesses up on, in the port building have? Like some of the businesses up on, in the port building have that are actually, they're not affixed to the building, they're overhanging so that you're seeing it as you're walking through?
As, as long as it's on, with, it doesn't overhang onto the private property. And it's high enough that it won't whack anybody in the head.
That was only one other suggestion I would have. You could always look at those overhanging signs as well. May not catch car traffic, it might catch more of your, your street traffic. But, you know, but also talking to, from what Charlene said, you do have some land in your property line that you'll be able to use.
So yeah, there, there may be some creative ways that we may need to. And we talked about this at the last meeting. I don't mean to, sorry, Mr. Chairman. You know, we used the example the last time of, oh my gosh, I forget the name of the restaurant, baseball theme.
Tuxedo.
Thank you very much. They actually created, because that sidewalk used to go all the way. And they created a little area there that's on their own property. And they do have a sandwich board sign that is up on their own property, you know, on their brick, you know, off their entrance and everything. So there are going to be some creative ways that we can think of. That's an extreme example, based on what I think might be able to be done. I'm not an attorney, so, you know, I can't say, yep, you can absolutely do this. But I can give you some, some ideas on what might work.
Sure, that'd be great. I mean, we just wanted to, you know, just stand up and say before we get to everything.
I really thank you very much, Mr. Bates. You did, you did a nice job making your case.
Thank you.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay, so is there anyone else? Sir?
Sure. My name's Matt Rossadini, owner of Cape Side Kitchen, co-owner. You know Luther and I, he's been very helpful as we're both new business owners in the amazing area that we're in. And, you know, what we have found with us being primarily in the back of the building, you know, we have a lot of concerns regarding, and now there's been some clarification about some of the sidewalk might actually be private land and whatnot. But, you know, I, it's concerning to think that based on the property, when it was built, if it was built in the eighteen hundreds, nineteen hundreds, or whatnot, that these lines could, I mean, it sounds like each one is different. And that's pretty, I mean, that's a, that's a roll of the dice right now with us not knowing. So it's a big unknown. You know, and one of my, the reason why I'm so concerned about this is, you know, we had taken the rent, the lease, it had, it had come up for a lease. And we walked into a vacant location that had been around for forty, fifty, sixty, seventy years.
Yep.
And, you know, it was interesting to me that I was shown that the previous owner, Bonatz, had a sandwich board. And, you know, with me thinking about, you know, how do I draw more traffic? I saw the sandwich board in storage. And it literally, everything that I thought of that was a pain point for me was being, was done on a sandwich board for a business that had been there for forty years. So it shows that, you know, the struggle is apparent and it's real for even a place that's been around for, for, you know, years. So, you know, obviously, we have to look at the plot planned and what we can do. But, you know, one of the things that I'm confused about, it talks about with the ADA, distance sidewalk, that it can't be less than five feet. So I guess the question is, if the sidewalk is eight feet, even if it is public way, if that's, you know, how does that, where does that fall into place? Because it's, it doesn't block traffic, travel, but.
Mary?
If it's not your property, you cannot put a sign on it. We can't give you permission to put a sign on, on public property. We can't, certainly can't give you permission to put it on the state property.
Sure.
And the building inspector can't give you permission to put it on, on private property. It is, like we said earlier, it is going to come down to where your property line is and what you can do within that, within that strip of land. And like Charlene said, there might need to be some creative solutions. Some people may need flat signs.
I've talked a lot, trying to figure out, yeah.
Right. I, I think, Matt, you're going to find a lot of people are trying to help, right?
Right.
And I think where there's a will, there's a way. And we'll figure out how to do it and we'll figure out how to comply with the law too, so.
Okay.
Joe?
I just have one question. Is your business, did you, do you tenant the, what used to be the bakery out on twenty-eighth?
We had utilized that space in the summer. We are not going to continue, so we will be just in the back.
And just as a matter of history, your place of business at one time was located
On Bank Street.
On the corner of Bank Street and, and twenty-eighth. And I have a fond memory of the late speaker, Thomas O'Neil, who used to go there every Saturday morning with his New York Times and his old droopy shorts to get his melter ways.
So good. Are there, are you completed, Matt?
Yes, thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Anyone else? Sir?
Good evening. Doug Ramler from the Cape Sea Grill. Everybody has already pretty much voiced every angle except mine. So I just wanted to put it out there, obviously, I feel terrible because I'm thinking about my A-frame and I know exactly where it is and it's in the wrong spot. So I apologize to everybody. It's good that I came here and read Cindy's stuff and I will definitely move it. And it doesn't have to go back up, it's not life or death for me. But it does, like Luther said, it brings in a ton of business, especially at this time of the year. The shoulder seasons are the only time that we pop our little Cape Sea Grill sign up. And we are not on twenty-eighth. So I guess that's why I stood up here after everybody, just to ask that question. I'm not on twenty-eighth. Obviously, it's not my property. Where I am, I know is state or whatever property, so I apologize again. But that being said, Mr. York from the Port Center Building, I've always had a good rapport with. And I've talked to him about signs here and there over the years. And it's always come up that, excuse me, that the town has specific bylaws that limit such and such. So I guess what I'm saying or asking is maybe that there is some sort of special use where I can talk to a private owner who may or may not, as you guys find out in the future, have some private property on that existing sidewalk where I might be able to rent a space, you know, get a permit from you guys and rent a spot from, let's say, Mr. York or something like that. I haven't approached Mr. York, so I'm just throwing that out.
Actually, that provision already exists in the bylaw. You are allowed an off-premise sign on somebody else's property, provided you have their permission. The signage that you put there does count towards that property's square footage. So, you know, there may be some creative ways to do that. I think in the last, since I've been planner over the last year, I think I've signed off and reviewed at least two of those where there's been an off-premise sign. You know, the property owner that had the location that the other, you know, business wanted, you know, didn't have forty-eight square feet of signage, said, yeah, you can put your sign here, that's not a problem. Figured out the math and it all worked out. And they were permitted an off-premise sign on somebody else's property.
Okay.
And Doug, you're currently on the ladder sign, that ladder sign.
Plymouth Sign Company?
Yeah.
Yeah, don't lose that because we don't know how they got there and they'll, you'll learn another one, so don't.
Oh, that company?
No, no, those signs are not permitted, so that's like a super grandfathered sign, so don't mess with it.
Hold fast.
Because people keep asking me, how do we get one of those signs? And I'm like, they're not permitted, we have no idea where they came from. They've been there forever, they probably predate zoning, so.
Look, I, I really don't like to do this, but we have a lot of other business to get moving on. Unless there are some really tough issues that people would like to bring up on this topic, I'd like to ask that we can move. And thank you very much, Doug. Good idea.
Appreciate it.
Jim, just before you change that, go on, can we have, you're going to do another draft of this, correct?
I was just going to ask you that.
We can do some edits, I think.
So I think if, like we did with this, if I can send it out again so that the members will know or the businesses will know, so then we kind of lay the groundwork for going forward and we.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We can do that. Yeah. And we have a member of the Board of Selectmen here, he hears this. We'll be good. Craig, Mr. Chairman, if I may, before everyone leaves, I don't know if we talked about, I don't think we talked about it today, but we may have at previous. There is no, there are no signs that are grandfathered, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Unless it actually does predate the sign code, which nineteen eighty-seven.
I just wanted to.
Matt brought it up, so we need to do some thinking on Matt's A-frame, actually.
Right. I just want to make sure everybody hears that and understands so that, why didn't you say that at the public meeting? So.
Good, good points.
Okay. Pardon? Charlene, do we need to call for a vote on this at this point?
You do not.
Because we're going to edit and resubmit.
Am I going to edit language to add in the folding mechanism, come up with language for that one?
Please.
Okay, so I'll do that. David, if you want to send me some language that you are comfortable with? Hint, hint.
I'll give it, I'll give it a try.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Is our intention to review another draft before we send it to Selectmen?
Yeah, because you, you actually have to vote.
I think so at that point.
You should know we're being pushed a little bit by the Selectmen about getting it to him.
Oh, I know.
I was just going to request the not to vote tonight on it and allow the information that was promulgated this evening to sync in with the business members and to put your vote to next time.
Thank you.
The, the warrant closes February eighth, I think.
Yeah, we've got to move.
So you will need to vote at your next meeting
Yep.
On which bylaws you are going to be sending along.
So we could put that on the agenda.
That'll definitely be on the agenda for the next meeting.
Does this issue close for this evening? Okay, the next, the next item we have is building height relative to the flood plain.
So this we've kind of bypassed the last couple of times because there were some other pressing issues. The board may recall, you've been looking at this one since, like, I don't know, September?
Yep.
I don't know if anybody has, has looked at this any further or has any other comments. I don't want to delve too much into it, we can bring this back on the twenty-ninth. If there are any glaring, or if you need a reminder as to why we're doing this, I'm happy to discuss that. But if there are any glaring errors or things, and in particular, Dave, I'd love to hear from you offline. If there are things in here, being an architect, you probably know better than any of us, if something is worded particularly odd. Just a reminder, this language was actually borrowed from the state of New Jersey after Sandy. And then it was called further by the town of Dennis. So this has been blessed by their council and everybody else. So this is actually a standing bylaw that exists in another community and really is kind of a model for other flood prone communities with height issues, building height issues.
So are we?
If I may?
May I finish my question? Charlene, are there, are there any steps that we need to take? Or what's, will we vote on this tonight or will we?
No, 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 I'm not suggesting that because I don't think you've had
Enough.
Enough conversation. I know at the last meetings, you were like, well, let's think about it, let's think about it. Well, you got to really start thinking about this one.
Okay.
To see if you, if you're comfortable moving forward with it. And again, David, if, if there's something that pops out at you from an architectural standpoint that you think might need to be tweaked, that'd be great. But again, this is something that's already been vetted by.
I've, I've read it a couple of times and I have no comment.
Okay, great. I would feel more comfortable with the board voting all the zoning things at the same time. So I'm not suggesting you vote tonight.
I mean, it makes sense, but Craig, you have a comment?
I had, we had talked at the last meeting about a maximum height of the structure once it's lifted. And I think you had referred me to something in the code.
Actually, within this document, the proposed bylaw through you, Mr. Chairman, the way it's written is that you are allowed to raise it as high as necessary to meet the flood standard. So if you only need to raise it two feet, that's what you get to raise it to. You're not allowed to raise it five feet so you can get a view over everybody else's house or block somebody else's view. So there is a written limitation in there in the existing language.
Off of, off of the flood.
I mentioned this at the last meeting, that because of global warming and the oceans rising, even though it's only been one, one point two or three inches since nineteen hundred, what's that enough to is one point two inches of more water across the entire area of all the oceans in the world?
Yep.
Which feeds a lot of water. When the storms push that water, either by tidal or wind, that means there's a whole lot more water that can be pushed inland for flooding. So what, what has been recommended by the entire FEMA director, Frank Fugate, is to allow people to build three feet above the flood plain in order to accommodate future rises. So that's the one thing I would say we should consider, not capping, you know, certainly five feet is too much, but I think going up to three feet above
The flood plain.
Is, is not, would be warranted.
Well, right now, and our building commissioner is still here. Right now, the code says it has to be one foot above base flood elevation, is that correct? Correct, okay. So right now, it does have to be one foot above base flood elevation. In this bylaw, it says new, definition of new and appropriate elevation means any of, any elevation to which a structure is raised or is to be raised that is equal to or higher than the applicable FEMA base flood elevation, provided however, in no case shall the new and appropriate elevation exceed the highest applicable flood elevation standard. So in English, what that says to me is if the base flood elevation is eleven, the building code is saying, no, you need to go to twelve, you can go to that twelve.
Yeah, that, that, that makes sense. But what I'm suggesting is that we, we should allow people to go up for when the base elevation is eleven, let them go to fourteen. They don't have to go to fourteen. And if the code requires that they go to two, twelve, that's fine. People are going to be there for a long time. And it keeps raising the flood elevation every time they redo the map.
Actually, they've been raised once since nineteen seventy-eight.
Well, they may not be remapping every area of the country, but they're focusing on areas like Houston and things like that where they've had really serious problems.
They just remapped all of Cape Cod in Massachusetts in two thousand and fourteen.
Right. And in five or ten years, they may find that that, that remapping is inadequate. That's the point. Things are moving a lot faster than, you know, I really, I haven't worked with FEMA flood mapping people in about fifteen years, but this is, this was a comment of Frank Fugate, the FEMA director. the FEMA Director under, I'm not sure if it was Obama, but I know it was Bush 43, is recommending that they go three feet above the FEMA flood level in order to accommodate future rises.
Okay, Craig? Still on the maximum height of the structure. Is there in the code, and I'm looking at the Building Inspector, a maximum height for structures currently?
There is, it's 30 feet, and keep in mind, this is to only elevate existing structures.
Correct.
So under the, the code right now, if you're gonna build a new home in a floodplain district, you need to abide by that 30 feet.
What about the, the structures that we're lifting?
The structures we're lifting can go above that 30 feet, based on where the base flood elevation is.
Okay, so.
You can't, you can't add a second story onto your home.
Right. So to follow Dave's, if we allowed 14 feet, and you raised it 14 feet, and it's currently, because it was built under the current 30, we're gonna end up with a structure with the peak of the roof now at 44 feet?
Could, based on that.
Yep. Is that a concern?
The goal here, the goal here is not to pick an arbitrary 30 feet, the goal here is to make it safe.
Yeah.
For safety.
Right.
Right.
Sure. Above the, yeah, right, but also, correct. I, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to give an opportunity for somebody to put up a five-story B and B.
No.
Right.
You limited to two and a half stories.
Yeah, you, under, under the.
I did read that, and I was trying to figure out how that played into where we lift it from, based on the flood.
Right, so if you have, and again.
So it's two and a half feet.
Two and a half stories.
Uh, two and a half stories.
Is the maximum that you're allowed.
And it can be any number of feet, based on where the flood, where you raise it to.
Only for an existing structure, not a new structure.
Right, so theoretically, if you had an existing structure, that each floor was 20 feet, and when it was two and a half stories, so it was 30.
But it'd be over if it was 20, you'd already be over.
Yeah, it'd be over the two and a half.
Yeah.
Okay.
I won't beat it more than that.
That seems to be the, the 30 feet limit, might be adjusted when new buildings are built in a floodplain?
I, that's, I don't know that that's our purview, David.
Well, it is, but I don't know if you wanna go there.
I'm, I, not.
We'll never make the one.
We're, I think we're.
If I might, in some communities where they allow building within a floodplain.
Yep.
They actually limit the building height to a lesser amount.
Yep, there you go.
Because it does have to get raised up.
Right.
So you're only, I think in Chatham, it's 20 feet. That's your building height.
Max.
Max.
Mary, you had a comment?
My only comment was to maybe give Craig a little clarification. If you have a 30-foot house in a floodplain that needs to be raised three feet, that existing house can be 33 feet, because it was allowed to be raised. They don't have to take a coupla off the top, or, or take a half a flight.
Exactly.
Right, so, but to Charlene's point, the new house has to stick to the 30. So the house next door could be three feet higher, because it pre-existed.
Yep.
Exactly.
Okay, so what are our actions as a result of this discussion, Charlene?
It will be on the next agenda. The Board needs to, you know, kinda decide, do they want to allow for extra footage? My feeling is, if you give somebody the ability to go up 14 feet, they're gonna go to the 14 feet whether they need to or not, under current flood. I understand what Dave's saying regarding, you know, water rising and, and all of that, but I don't, you know, I don't know where this Board would recommend drawing that line.
Yeah, and I don't think we'll come to that conclusion this evening either.
And I don't, I don't know if you'll ever come to a conclusion on that.
We're gonna need to vote the next time.
Yeah, we're gonna have to vote during the next meeting, right?
Yeah. And your vote can be, let's defer it till next year. I mean, you don't have to move any of these forward, if, if you're not comfortable doing so.
Okay. Is there, is there, Craig?
Sorry, I do have one more. Item two, about lifting the existing structure, maybe relocated elsewhere on the lot, as long as said relocation does not create a newer, increase the intensity of a setback. So does that mean, this is really, I guess, an edification for me, does that mean if the setback is now 50, and I temporarily relocate it to raise the foundation?
No, no, that's not what that's meaning. What this allows you to do is, if you are 50 feet from your rear slot line, you can actually move it up to 20 feet to that property line permanently.
Oh, permanently.
Permanently. If it gets you out of a floodplain, you can move the house.
Yep.
But if you're at 20 feet.
Yeah, you can't get closer.
You can't get closer.
Or if you're at 15 feet, you can't get closer.
Even temporarily, while you're building the foundation.
Well, temporarily is different, though.
This isn't about temporary, this is about a permanent.
This is about permanent.
This is about relocating on your own lot.
Yeah.
You know, if, if you're oceanfront, and, and you're losing land, you can move your house back.
Exactly.
Move it up, but you can move it back up.
You're good?
In, in house lifting?
Yep.
They just lift it and build underneath it, they don't move it. It's rare that they actually have to move a house.
You're good, Craig?
I am, thank you.
Okay, good, 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 okay. So Charlene, we're just gonna, we'll move past this, and we'll, we'll consider it on the next.
On the next agenda.
Next agenda. Okay, so the next, the next item we have is, under public meeting three is, number three is accessory dwelling unit bylaw.
My apologies for not having been at the meeting last night.
No worries.
Yeah, I, I had a personal thing come up. So I've talked to Mary this morning, she gave me a little bit of feedback. It kind of sounds like, and if I'm going in the wrong direction here, let me know, but it kind of sounds like that the Board was leaning towards having all accessory apartments, regardless if they're in the main building, or an accessory structure, as by right.
To clarify, Selectmen McCaskill asked that question last night.
Yeah. Personally, I would've loved to have gone that direction in the first place, but I think when we started discussing this early on, we thought, well, let's do baby steps. But certainly, if that's a direction that the Board wants to go, I am 100% in favor of it. And based on that, I actually drafted something.
Okay.
So I will hand this out when it's through four, five.
You wanna read it into the minutes?
It's kinda long, I'd rather not, but I can, do you still have your copy, Mr. Chairman?
I.
Is it buried?
It's probably buried, but yes, I haven't thrown anything away.
Actually, I have it on the, Michael, would you like a copy, so you can redo this?
Here, I, I have it, Charlene, it's right, actually, on top. This is section 325-51.
Yep.
David, it's.
Was that in your email, Charlie?
It should be at the very end of the PowerPoint presentation. So because none of this would be a special permit anymore, it wouldn't have to fall into the special permit section of the zoning bylaw. It would fall under other regulations. So I did this very quickly, and I may have put it in the wrong spot, but I can go back to that. So essentially, what would happen is, you would delete in its entirety the section 325-51H, and it should say H, and you would actually be adding a new section, 325-14, it can be R or T, R is actually reserved, so we can fill that in if we want, or make it T. So that T would now be single-family dwellings with an accessory apartment. The purpose has stayed exactly the same. The definition has stayed exactly the same. What has changed is that item number three is now criteria, an accessory apartment is allowable within an existing, within an existing, single-family dwelling structure, or any accessory detailed structure pursuant to the following criteria. The criteria remains the same.
Yep.
I don't know if on item C, only one principal dwelling or accessory apartment may be rented at any given time, and we had put in there for discussion purposes for no less than six consecutive months. I'm not sure where that fell in the conversation.
So I can just, through you, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Selectmen Ballantyne raised a point last night about maybe having it as three to four months, he was concerned about the six months. My only comment to that is that the six months originally, when, before you came back as planner, we had talked about the six months, and the six months was really a method to drive to year-round, to adding year-round units, as opposed to adding Airbnb units. So that's where the six months came from. His comment last night was three to four months.
Yep.
And we don't really have it in here, it's, you know, I'm not sure how, how this Board wants to go from a housing standpoint, if you're looking for workforce housing, and you're trying to use this as a means to add workforce housing, that may not happen if you don't put a, a minimum six-month rental in there. But that being said, there's also an issue of policing, so.
Yep.
I throw that out there as food for thought.
Yep, and, and thanks, Mary, because, you know, I think what, what Mr. Ballantyne wanted was, was consideration that there are some that come and work for three months, there are some who maybe come from overseas that work longer than three months, perhaps four months. So, you know, I think, I think that's a very minor.
Yeah, one, one thing to point out, that you can, you can amend a zoning bylaw amendment to be less restrictive, you can't make it more restrictive.
Yeah.
So if you do put six months in there, and there's a motion on town meeting floor to decrease it to three or four months, I do believe that would be an allowable amendment on town meeting floor, because you're making it less restrictive.
Less restrictive.
You can't go the other way.
Sure. Comments?
Yeah.
Joe?
I raise a question as to whether or not it should be no months. I'm not so sure that, that, in other words, I'm thinking in terms of homeowner has the garage with the apartment over the garage, and they, especially, I'm thinking of the properties I talked about last night, between 28 and the water, most of those rentals are not for long periods of time.
Week or two.
Week or two at a time, and, and this, I guess, would prohibit that, wouldn't it?
Well, if it's existing now, they wouldn't fall under this. I mean, we, we also see a number of, in that same location, rather than apartments, we're seeing accessory bedrooms, which are exceeding the 900 square feet. We've seen, we saw one tonight, where people want that overflow sleeping space, they don't wanna deal with the kitchen, you know, they just wanna get their kids out of the house with their grandkids, let them, you know, have their space over the garage, and then they'll have their meals together in the house. So we have seen a lot of that happening. If there are, of course, there are existing older properties that have cottages associated with them, that are grandfathered, those don't fall under this provision. If it has a special permit now, it would already have fallen under this provision. So.
So.
Mary?
If I may.
Yes.
The follow-up, whether six, whether a six-month limitation would pass at town meeting, I don't know. That originally, when the Cape Cod Commission, I think, was originally.
Yes.
The one that had asked all the local towns to start looking at our accessory apartments bylaws in order to drive more, probably small A affordable housing, as opposed to capital A affordable housing, that was one of the provisions that they had raised, and we had talked about that about a year and a half ago, when we had talked about amending this when Ally was still here. And then we didn't make any changes. So I raised that, just to raise the issue, and, you know, it could be a barrier for some people, it, it might actually be a plus for some people. You know, certainly, Selectmen Ballantyne didn't, didn't seem to like the six months last evening.
No, no. Joe?
In, in full disclosure, I have one of these, and I, I don't rent it at all, it just, my kids use it, but the fact of the matter is, I, I'd be opposed to any restriction in terms of time, nothing to do with my own property I'm talking about, I just don't think we should put a restriction like that on. I just think there should merely be the language that is there, only one of the principles of, maybe rented at any given time, period. I'd be opposed to it, to, to.
I understand.
Putting the restriction.
Honestly, I feel the same. I mean, I'm, I'm, I want everybody to have their discussion and input, but I, I kinda feel that what we're doing is, we're, we're, we're making it, by even stating that, is somewhat restrictive, but again, I'm.
Well, that's why it's in dark.
That's why it's discussion.
Lane says for discussion only.
So I, I mean, I tend to agree with Joe. Comments? Sir?
Certainly not speaking for the whole Board.
Yep.
I think.
Who are you for the record, sir?
Michael McCaskill. Since this has been discussed, and ADUs have been discussed, the reason was for affordable housing, or workforce housing, senior housing.
Yep.
So there was a purpose to it.
Yep.
If we just leave this with no dates on there, a lot of people are gonna apply to be able to rent weekly in the summertime, and we're gonna have a net gain of nothing.
Yeah.
So, has anyone looked at the model that the Commission came out with, and did they have a timeframe in, in the one that the Commission came out with, the model?
The model, I think it's three or four months.
Yeah.
I thought it was proposing six, but that was a year and a half ago, and I don't remember.
Well, and then I would look, Brewster has a waiting list now of people that wanna do this, and it's based on workforce housing.
Yep.
Senior housing, and I know that they have a timeframe in it also, so I would just urge you to look at.
Yeah.
The Commission's and the other one, and the purpose of this for us isn't to create just more rental units, it's to create some senior housing.
Yep.
Affordable housing.
Yeah.
Workforce housing.
Yeah.
And by not putting a time in there, my fear would be that we would just make it so people could make more rental units.
Yeah.
And most likely, I would personally vote against it.
Yep, yeah.
With or without the six months?
I don't think, I'm not sure six months is the right number, maybe it's three, maybe it's four. Most J1s come for four months.
Yep.
So most people that come here to work in the summer are four months, and most of this is, ends up being pre-arranged by people like CBI or Waco City.
Yep.
They're finding these rentals. They would pay a four-month, I would, I would guess they would pay a four-month, whether they were here for three or not.
Yep.
Maybe three's the magic number, but I would, I would urge you to look at what other communities are doing.
You know, I mean, Mike, you make a great point, and, and I think, you know, that's, I mean, we should all try to be maybe consistent, and I don't wanna backtrack on this. I, I don't, I don't like the idea of, and the concept of being restrictive when it comes to people making money, or, or, you know, but I, but I also think we should keep in mind that, what you just said about housing, affordable housing and those things, that's a very good point.
Well, I don't wanna be restrictive either, and I think we, we live in America, and people should be able to do what they want with their property.
Yep.
But the reason we're doing this.
Yep.
Was for workforce and affordable housing.
Yep.
Not to create more rentals.
Yep, yep. Mary?
And just a follow-up, I think.
Thanks, Mike.
The thing to keep in mind is, an accessory dwelling apartment is different than a two-family home. I mean, it's.
Oh, yeah.
It's why it has a restriction, that it has to be owner-occupied, so.
It's limited to 900 square feet.
And it's limited in size and, and scope, so.
Yep.
There are, there are other means to do other things as well.
So if.
But, I mean, for discussion.
If we were, if we were to, and Joe, I would ask your input on this, if we were to come up with something that we'd like to recommend, what would you be comfortable with? Anything?
Well, I just agree with the good Selectmen, I, I, I don't think there should be any restriction. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
Yeah, yeah.
And I live in a neighborhood, interestingly enough, I can, from the front of my house.
Yeah.
I can see one, two, three properties.
Yep.
All of which have accessory apartments.
Yep, yep.
Some over garage, some in other parts of the house.
Yep.
So forth, but.
Sir?
Thank you for disagreeing with me.
Agree to disagree, Mike.
So south, of, of course, south of 28, and I think that looking at situations like[1751.23] yours where your kids use it, there's a mechanism for the right-sized lot and for the right-sized septic system for those people to continue to create those family units.
Yeah.
Correct? It's different than what we're talking about and different from what the ADU is. I'm not suggesting that we don't allow somebody on their own property, if they meet the setbacks and, and meet zoning and meet everything else, that they can add a separate building, which you all approve often, correct? Not, maybe not often, but they're before you. So I'm not suggesting that you don't.
I think there were eight last year.
But on this particular bylaw, I think we should be looking at the purpose of it, which is to create rentals. And Joe, if, if we did this open, what percentage would you guess would then rent the house weekly in the summertime versus take a lot less to rent it to three or four months to a J1 or a senior that may live in the community? What percentage, what gain would we have on our affordable housing, which is what we're talking about this week? That's my only.
And, and if I might.
Charlie?
The purpose, and this is an existing purpose, this isn't new, this is existing. Increase the number of small dwelling units available for rent in town, increase the range of choice for housing accommodations.
Mm-huh.
Encourage greater diversity of population with particular attention to young adults and senior citizens, and encourage a more economic and energy-efficient use of the town's housing supply while maintaining the appearance and character of the town's single-family neighborhoods. So that's an, that's the existing purpose.
Yep.
In the bylaw.
Craig?
Mr. Chairman, and I think if we stay true to what Charlene just read and what, what Mike said, if we key in on why are we doing this? Why are we having this conversation? We've clearly outlined four specific goals or objectives.
Yep.
And one of them is not to provide additional summer weekly rental to visitors to town. So if we, I, I think that we need to have some kind of parameters around the period of time for, that, that these can be rented unless we can come up with some other way that would encourage the owner to not go with the weekly rental or B and, B and B concept kind of thing.
Yeah.
So I, I would be comfortable with, um, a minimum of three months. I wouldn't be comfortable with anything less than that.
And, and would you have that, would you say, Craig, um, we should elaborate on, uh, number 4C and, and, and state some of those things that, um, Charlene read or?
3C?
3C, is this?
3C.
Are you looking at the new one?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't, yeah, maybe I have the old one, but.
The, yeah, the new one's dated, today's date at the top.
I don't have that.
Here, here you go.
You have one, I don't know where it ended up.
I think I stole it.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, here's the current. I had the one dated 12/20, but, yeah, 3, 3, uh, C.
I, I guess in the answer to your question, I, this is all positive and good, these are good reasons and good things and they're positive things.
Yep.
Uh, if we start laying out all the negative, you can't do this and you can't do that and you can't do this, while I understand we're laying it out and making it very clear, I don't want to put a lot of negative in, in it as well. I would like to keep the focus on what we're trying to accomplish.
And that, and that's why I, I offered an idea to, to put in there what the purpose is behind this, uh, length of time, if you will.
Oh, I see what you're saying, the purpose for the time.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, so, let's say it was three months, three consecutive months. I have this accessory, I'm not saying I do, I'm just saying, I'm pretending.
Yeah.
I have this accessory, I could still just do weekly, I could have 12, 12 straight weeks of weekly rental, right?
No.
No.
The, the point is that it's one lease for no less than.
Right.
For no less than three months or no less than six months.
Doesn't it say that?
That's what it would imply.
For no less than six consecutive months, that's.
I know, I know six, let's say if it was three.
Yep. So you can rent it for three months.
Three consecutive.
To, to, to John, three months to Mary, three months to Joe.
Uh, so it has to be to one person?
Or.
That was the intent.
Persons.
Yeah. To clarify through you, Mr. Chair, that was the intent of the, of the six months. Originally, the six months was to require that one, one person, one family was going to live there for, um, a lengthy duration to encourage more of the long-term, um, as a, encourage it as a long-term rental as opposed to the Airbnb, week-by-week situation, um, for workforce housing purposes. So that was what started the whole conversation.
Okay.
Mike?
I sent a quick email out when you started the conversation. I got a response from Brewster, not the commission yet. The, Brewster is doing 12 months.
I've got a comment on the.
12 months?
Yeah, and I'm not proposing we do 12 months, but Brewster is doing 12 months.
I thought they did 12.
Okay, all right. Uh, David, sir?
Yeah, when, when you get done, we'll talk about the time. Uh, I've got a comment on item H.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'd like to, I'd like to see you remove item H completely.
Again, just to, this is existing language in the existing bylaw, just so everybody understands that.
I, I think, I think you cannot legislate good design. Uh, there are, there are millions of, of colonial homes with, with tasteful contemporary additions that look a lot better than somebody trying to continue an ugly building.
Beauty is in the eye of the beholder.
I'm sorry, say again?
Beauty is in the eye of the beholder.
Well, and, and of course, and, and architects are, are, are the great decision-makers on that topic, but.
Right, yeah.
I mean, personally, I don't care one way or the other.
Yeah, I.
We already took out the language regarding, um, traffic because that was very subjective.
Reasonably reasonable.
How do you, you know?
Shall be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not like will be.
Yeah, it shall, it shall be, yeah, I, I, I agree.
I'd like to leave the language in there, right? It, it, it's not mandatory language, uh, it's at best a suggestion, I think, and.
There's plenty of wiggle room. It's like to stay in character.
Yeah.
Right.
Throw us a bone.
Um, if I can.
Yeah. Mary, please.
I have one, um, legal point, um, for Charlene.
Mm-huh.
I would suggest that, um, when this goes back to town council, that, um, you ask them about, as opposed to deleting and adding, that you move the section because when, um, when the Attorney General's Office reviews, if you are replacing it in its, in its entirety, they will, they will review the entire bylaw all over again from scratch, whereas.
I've never done a move.
So, I, I, I think it may be possible or a renumbering, maybe just renumber the section, um, because as you are giving them the adds and the subtractions from the existing bylaw, then they would only, the Attorney General's Office's, uh, focus is limited to the, what's added and what's subtracted only.
Okay.
Whereas if you replace it in its entirety, they get a clean look at the whole, at the whole bylaw. So something that exists now, they might kick, something that had been approved before, they might kick later. So I would just ask town council about the move versus the.
Right, one, one concern I have on that is because we're also deleting some other sections that are no longer necessary.
Mm-huh.
Yeah.
You still can, you can still delete, they'll still look at your additions and your deletions.
Yep.
But if you remove the, if you remove everything that already exists that you're trying to keep.
Yep.
Yep.
They're going to get to look at it when they, when you add it back in.
So, Charlene, would you summarize for us, please, some of the things that were?
Well, we're still, we're still going there and I know that the time is getting late, but, um, so, what am I, what am I doing with months? Anything?
I'll make a motion.
Vote for three.
I don't think you need a motion.
Oh, motion.
I think you just need a consensus.
So David, you're, you're in favor of three?
Yes.
I, I would suggest four that could be reduced to three, but that's me.
I said, I, I said I would live with nothing less than three, but hearing that Brewster's doing 12, I'd like to see six. But I'll, I'll go with, now it's three.
What about if, i- 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 is it appropriate to say three to four?
No, no.
It's got to be one or the other.
Got to be one or the other.
Yeah.
Because it's a, it's a minimum.
Okay.
Right, it's a, it's a floor.
Yeah.
No, no less than three, no more than four? Or no less than three?
No, no, no.
No, no.
You don't want that.
Then I, I.
If you get a 12-month, you want a 12-month.
You want a 12-month. I would, I would put, personally, I would go with three. It's my opinion only. Michael?
Is your intent to vote this tonight?
No.
No.
But I need to come up with language.
A recommendation.
So, the, the reason I ask is, at, at our meeting, uh, last night.
Yep.
The discussion was also for you guys to bring in Mr. Coburn, who the town has just paid a fair amount of money for to be our housing consultant.
Yep.
This would be a great question for our new housing consultant.
Yeah, Jay Coburn, correct.
So, CDC or whatever the name of the company.
CDP.
CDP.
Yep.
They've, they've been working on this for three or four years.
Yep.
So I think that they could offer some insight on how many months makes sense.
That's, uh, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
They're going to say anywhere from three to 12.
Yeah.
In all honesty, they're going to say anywhere from three to 12.
So as an action, as an action, Charlene, do you think it would be the thing to do? Just talk to him and, and see what he recommends?
I, I can, he's going to say anywhere from three to 12.
What?
Because that's what's out there right now and that's the guidance that we're getting from all different agencies. Um, again, if you leave it at six, you can reduce it. If it's at three, you can't.
Increase it.
Increase it.
So Brewster's at 12?
Brewster's at 12.
Mike said, yeah.
Because they're driving it for year-round.
Mm-huh.
Yeah, yeah. Which is ultimately, as you just said, what we would like to see. Yep. Too.
Have my piece?
Yep.
I, I, I mean.
I mean, think about it, but some more, but, you know.
I know, and I understand that too.
Let's just.
I was going to keep going.
Keep going.
Um, I know another, um, thing that had come up was regarding, um, the CWMP, which is the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan.
Yep.
Um, if you look at item 3I, the principal dwelling unit and accessory apartment shall meet all wastewater treatment requirements for the combination number of bedrooms, whether you're on septic or sewer, I think that addresses it.
Sounds like it.
True.
Yeah.
You know, doesn't, whether, whichever, you, you need to comply with whatever the requirements are.
Which is whatever's applicable to your unit.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, to me, it's already addressed.
Yep.
I knew it, there was something in there someplace.
Mm-huh.
Um, so moving forward, um, the requirement that it has to be recorded, the registry of deeds would go because it's no longer a special permit.
Yep.
Transfer of ownership provision would also go.
Yep.
Um, I did leave in the final, um, paragraph, which is a final determination that the owner failed to comply with these provisions.
Mm-huh.
Or the termination of occupancy by the owner. Um, I left that in there only because if it is being violated in some way, if it's being rented on a weekly basis or what have you, um, you know, this is the catch-all for that.
Yeah.
So that did, um, remain.
Okay.
So if the board is good with going the direction that, and I will find out if we can do it as a, instead of delete, renumber and do it that way, um, that might be the cleanest way. If, if we can do that, I will get that email out to, to, um, Adam Costa tomorrow.
Okay.
So are we good moving in? And I'm just going to leave it.
Yep.
At six for now and you guys can talk about it more at the next meeting.
And you will or will not speak with Jay?
I'll run it by him, but I think he's going to go anywhere from three to 12 depending upon whose model you want to use.
And then we'll leave six in there, right?
Well, let's ask him, just as a suggestion, okay, we hear that and that's where our board is at, they're all over the place, what do you recommend?
Yeah.
Three to six.
We don't have to.
Three to 12 months, I mean, it's.
Pick a number between a.
Zero to 12.
Mister convoy or whatever your name is.
You know.
And we don't have to.
Coburn.
Agree with it, Coburn.
Coburn, it.
You can ask the Affordable Housing Trust and they're going to tell you 12.
Right.
So, you know.
I mean, I've seen a number of different bylaws, Chatham is grappling with, um, more than 12, which, as a Chatham resident, I'm like, wow, that's insanity. But, um, you know, it, it's whatever people are comfortable with.
Yep.
And it's anywhere from three to 12.
And it's what's going to get past a town meeting.
And it's what's going to get past the town meeting. And that's why one of my concerns is if we go low, people don't like that and they vote it down because they want it rented longer.
We can't.
We can't increase it. Whereas if it's at six and somebody wants to decrease it, they can. So just some food for thought.
If, if, at town meeting, if we put in three and somebody could introduce an amendment for six, correct?
Mm-huh.
No.
No.
Oh.
It's more intensive, you cannot be more intensive with a zoning amendment.
Oh, even though, even though we hadn't approved it yet.
Right, you cannot, if there's an amendment to.
The proposal?
Yeah. If there's an amendment to put in a setback of 25 feet and somebody moves to make it 30 feet, you can't do that.
Let's just go with six. Go with six.
I'm good.
I'm going to leave it the way it is for right now, but I will find out from council the proper way to, to do it, to make it easier.
All right.
Okay.
So the next, uh, we've, we've flagellated that poor dead horse long enough. I think maybe we should go to, uh, retaining wall for septic, uh, systems.
I think maybe we should go to retaining law for septic, uh, systems.
Okay, this hasn't changed from what you saw back on the twenty-second. You guys can wait and vote on this at your next meeting.
Joe?
No, I'm, I'm fine.
Are you?
Ten feet.
If everybody's fine, do you, do you want to take a vote?
Nope, because as soon as you vote, it's got to go to the Board of Selectmen for them to refer it back to you. That's why I'd rather do this all at once.
Okay, send it all.
One-stop shopping.
Said that, Mary. Send them all, right? Okay. All right, good. So, um, now we're, I'm stunned, we're at new business?
There's been some good discussion this evening.
Oh, it's been great, really. New business, representative to the Community Preservation Committee, vote to appoint. Any suggestions from the planning board besides Mary Maslowsky? Second.
So I have one caveat to that.
Yes.
I'm happy to, however, it's subject to Board of Selectmen's approval. And it would also require that I resign from the housing committee representative, and then the housing committee would need to appoint a new representative. Hopefully, there is somebody who would be willing to take it on, um, and there are some-
Junior in his?
Junior's in his name, that is, that is the thought.
Yes.
So I, I say that only as a caveat, because you all need to know all about that before I say-
Except I'm going to have to a victim out of the apartment over the garage now.
No, not at all. No, not at all. You pre-exist.
So-
Your grandfather.
Grandfather.
I sure am.
So the, uh, so Mary?
I'm willing to take that, to take the planning board position if that is this board's pleasure.
CPC.
See, on CPC, as opposed, subject to Board of Selectmen's approval and acceptance of my resignation from the housing side.
Why, why do you need?
Because I'm currently the housing committee's representative to CPC.
Oh, I see.
So, so-
And now you're beaver.
So, if I get the planning board appointment from the Selectmen, I can certainly tender a resignation and make a contingent.
We need to keep our talent in-house.
Thanks.
Okay. So, you have a motion?
Uh, would you like to have a motion? Do, do we have one?
I think he moved, and he seconded it.
You, did you make a motion?
I did not, I moved all.
There was no second to the motions, you guys.
I, I moved to appoint Ms. Maslowsky to the housing.
No, the Community Preservation Committee is the planning board representative.
Community Preservation Committee.
Yeah, as the planning board representative.
I will second that.
Okay, now, roll call, roll call. Uh, Craig?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Mary?
Sure.
Vote for yourself.
Sure.
Aye.
Unanimous.
So it's unanimous? Congratulations.
Way to go.
Subject to consent.
Move to adopt the meeting minutes of December eleventh and November, and December twentieth, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Second. All in favor, uh, let's start with Craig?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, next. Annual re, review, annual report.
Mr. Chairman, I, where am I?
Yes, you may.
I had a chance to read through what you put together, I think it's great.
Thank you.
Oh, I thought you were-
I only respectfully submitted it.
Do we need a motion?
You don't really, if you're, if there's any changes, or if you're, you know, if you're good with it.
Is there anything that anyone would like to comment on?
It looks lovely, I tried to grasp everything.
I think it was very, I think it was quite good, and, uh, I think this team should be proud of that work.
So if you're good, everybody's good with this?
We're good with this, yep, yep.
Okay, awesome.
Advisory opinions are next. We could go around the table if anyone would like to comment. Any advisory? Mary?
Nothing.
Alan? Craig?
Nothing for me.
Joe?
On me.
David?
All quiet on the southern front.
Any, uh, next is old business, any old business to bring up? David, we'll start with you, anything?
No, sir.
Craig?
No, sir.
Joe?
Uh, just to report that, uh, our Capitol, I'm your representative on the Capitol Outlay.
Yep.
And, uh, we met last night with the Board of Selectmen and provided our report. I'm not so sure they liked our report, but they, we, we submitted it, and, uh, after a lot of time and effort, I might add. And I would also indicate to you that we never could have put that report together without the assistance of the town administrator.
Aye.
He was a great, I mean, I, I've been on that board from this board for ten, twelve years. And, uh, with our new town administrator, or comparatively new town administrator, our, our job just becomes that much equal, be, easier, because he, he's got it all laid out before we ever even look at it.
So, you know, one of the, if I may, Joe, one, one of the things that I would suggest is when you, and again, from a business viewpoint, you want to, you want to look from the general down to the specific. So it might, for the purposes of making the pitch or the case, just say, well, here's where we were in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, so forth, so that there's a basis of comparison for the audience. And then when you say, and then it's comprised of so much to this department and so forth, then you, then you can get into the specifics and go department by department, so it's easier for the audience to grasp what it is that's either an increase or a decrease in the overall.
We project forward, we don't look back, is your point.
The point, the point is, you, you want to know if you're, if you're increasing that number, where it is and why, and in what area. There may be some areas that go up a lot in a particular year, and others concurrently go down, but the idea is not to penalize, um, you know, the people in the, in the town for improvements. You know, if we're going up two, two percent or whatever it is, uh, we want to make sure that we're not killing people with taxes.
We only look at things over fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
But it seems like we have a lot of things on there that are under fifty, simply because they're part of-
Yep.
In, in a department, they're part of-
Yeah, I, I honestly, I think it, it would have made the case a lot easier for people to grasp and understand. Uh, it's, and I'm, I'm happy to-
I'll bring that to the chairman's attention.
Yeah, I'm happy to, to, to help with that, too, so, anything?
Um, my only, I don't know if it's old business or briefings, but CPC is meeting Thursday night because I, I need four meetings in one week. So we are meeting on Thursday, we have, uh, the meeting starts at six o'clock, it is in this room. I encourage anybody listening and here in attendance that would like to attend to attend. We are, we have had one pass at all eight applications that are currently before us. We will start talking about all eight applications, and we may start voting on all eight applications this week. Uh, the intention, I believe, is to meet this week and next week, because, um, for those of you that don't know, once we take our votes, we then need to draft warrant articles to get submitted to the Selectmen, so that they can then include them on the warrant, and those are due second Friday in February, maybe. So there's a really tight turnaround time because we have less applications. We did it on a month-to-month, as opposed to meeting, meeting weekly, like we did last year. So the real discussions are, and the real kind of, um, money matters are going to start tomorrow night.
Yep.
So if anybody is interested, I would suggest you tune in or attend when, Thursday night, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Joe?
Mr., I have just one question. Have you got enough money?
So-
If you chose to give everybody who's applied-
From the numbers that were submitted initially, yes, it looked like there was enough. But as was the case last year, some of those numbers increased as we started asking more questions and getting more information. So not sure whether any updates would be seeking additional information. The caveat to that was, um, the application from the Brooks Academy Museum. Um, he had asked for a lower number, but, um, for the work that they were trying to do, there really was a, a much bigger number. I think he had a hundred and thirty in his original proposal, and really, for the work that they were trying to look at, was closer to five hundred. So there are a lot of questions still on, on, uh, that application and some others, so, um, yes, but we can also spend existing money and anticipate revenues for twenty twenty, so.
Thank you.
May I, um, is, is it anticipated that audience will be allowed to speak at this meeting?
I can't really say, the chair-
The "I don't know" is the answer, then that's fine?
So the, it, it really isn't "I don't know"? There is a chance to speak at the beginning of the meeting, I believe, there's, we always have a public comment at the beginning.
In the past, I tried to do that and was told to speak when the item came up, and then I was not allowed to speak at the item, just the point that, you know-
We do have a public comment.
I don't mind going to these meetings and supporting things as long as there's the opportunity to actually say something.
Where it's only the second time that we would be looking at any of the eight applications.
Are you looking at, is there a specific agenda, or is it-
It's all eight.
Okay.
It's all eight.
Who's your current chair?
Uh, Dave Nixon, who is the, uh, Youthman Recreation Commission, um, representative. So, um, if I recall, Charlene, it was, we'll start talking about all eight. And, uh, if I recall from last year, we kind of took, not a straw vote, but kind of had a general consensus